Have you seen Park County's largest beehive? Come by and check us out. We are located across from the historic Ritz Theater. We offer honey, vintage, handmade, and homemade items. The vintage beehive is open Wednesday through Sunday, 10 to 5. Like us on Facebook.
Welcome everybody to our monthly board meeting. Please join me in signing the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Look over here, minutes, ladies. No, it's not. Actually, didn't get one last year because it didn't play. Yeah. I mean, swear, too bad, there's not too many steam going in.
Yeah. It's Mr. Roger's syndrome.
Get some wood poo. Yeah, what's going on, like, see?
I think I've been here, and the chairs are all replaced.
Yeah.
How about that peanut butter back there?
Yeah, I saw that.
I was like, and I put something in the big room. I'm like, I don't care. And he's like, it's free, Adam. I got it for free.
A lot of a tear. Well, peanut butter's a staple.
We can make a lot of peanut butter cookies with that.
Well, it's good till November, so I said...
Only till November?
Yeah.
You better hustle that stuff.
Yeah. I said, well, we can make fudge out of it, sell it at the British Festival.
Yeah, there you go.
Hey, I got a little strawberry cookie cutter thing.
Oh.
You make fudge and cut it out with the strawberry cookie cutter and sell it at the British Festival.
Have you reviewed the minutes? Oh, you're still working.
Still working.
I haven't looked at it. Sure?
Did you find that phone number I laid on your desk for that house?
Oh, yes, I did. Yes, I did get that house number. Yeah, I looked them up.
Okay.
Did you see that Dale Knighton Dale was wanting to know who owned that house?
The one next to him? Yeah, like, I live in the middle. I don't have a lot of time. I talked to him.
I didn't know if he had his name or not.
I've talked to him. Super nice guy. I don't think the number, I don't think that's the name that I have, though. He's a flipper, but he and I talked a long time about that house. So, he both had some of the same thoughts. He was just the brave one. Said he's done a couple before, but I think he lives over by. I'll have to think about that. The information that Kenny Shore gave me is for a different house.
I don't, if there's something wrong, I didn't see it, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
It's gonna be you and me all night.
The move to second approve the minutes as presented. No questions?
No questions.
All favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Got a big crowd to go around to. You have anything you want to say?
I have nothing.
No? No? You want to bring anything up?
I have no opinion. Everybody's got opinions, but...
That's correct.
You might not want to force it.
Hey, Kevin, before you forget, there's an envelope in your, in class mailbox, your mailbox. It has an instruction manual or something you guys have or something. It's in that priority mailbox. I don't know. Stuff it in there, take it to you guys and check it out for documentation.
Okay, we'll go to old business. Have we got a date for the window installation?
Did he tell you anything?
No. I haven't talked to him. He said, well, the last...
When the weather gets better?
No. It was like five to six weeks, so...
I always see where I wrote him a check. I wrote him a check for deposit on that, so...
Oh, I didn't see that.
It's like forty-four hundred, so... But he came in that day and he did some remander and then did some double checking.
Is it a date on there?
Um...
The check goes?
It would be on the bill, probably.
The bill's on there?
Yeah.
My fingers aren't working.
They're like three pears on them.
Oh. Okay. Three twenty-three.
Three twenty-three, so that's been... Not a month yet.
Not a month yet, yeah.
I figured probably the first of May, I was thinking.
Okay.
Hey, I haven't looked at it.
Good enough.
Sorry, they were there.
Okay. The, uh... No progress on the empty council seat?
No progress on the empty council seat. I have had no one express an interest after I posted the Facebook post. I reached out to Scott Craig about our empty council seat, and he said... I got that phone this morning. I messaged him last week, and he's been doing some research, and this is what he says. This is what he's got. The statutes on filling a vacancy are near, so far as I can tell, silent on what happens if the town can't find anyone to fill the vacancy.
Of course.
It is supposed to be done within a certain number of days, depending upon whether the member resigned, moved, or passed away. But we're already beyond those days anyway, and it says nothing about what happens if you can't fill a vacancy. So, it just assumes that you will fill it. With that in mind, here is what I see as the options. A, maintain the course and continue to try and find someone willing to fill the vacancy who lives within the right part of town. B, eliminate all the districts, make all the seats at large. This can be accomplished via the adoption of an ordinance by the town council. Such an ordinance is effective immediately, meaning that all seats, including the vacant one, are at large, and the vacancy could then be filled by anyone who lives in Rosedale without regard to which part of town they are in. So, he and I talked about that on the phone today. He said that this is the year where we have time, since we don't actually have another town election until 2023. So, if we wanted to do that, now would be the time, if we wanted to go to all at large. Option C is eliminate some of the districts but keep some. You could make one, two, or three of the seats at large and keep four, three, or two with districts. This would be a little more complicated, as we'd have to make sure all the districts are balanced population-wise. Unfortunately, the statute says that this type of ordinance is only effective on January 1st of the year after it was adopted. Technically, this means that even if you converted the vacant seat into an at-large seat, you would still have to wait till January 1st to fill it with someone who lives anywhere in town unless someone turns up who resides in the district. So, it's like, he's been trying to figure this out for me for like a week. And he said, you know, option B, he said, if you want to go to all at large, it doesn't affect anyone. It's just, you know, in the future, anybody in town could run, no matter where they live, we have five seats to fill. He said that the census data is how you redistrict, and those numbers haven't fully been released yet. He said that then you'd have to go around and really get a good determination on how you wanted to move your wards around. If you wanted to go to like two at-large and three wards. I remember when I was on the council, we did talk about this a couple different times. We never really, well, we didn't have any good legal guidance.
Right.
And we didn't really make a good move on it. So, I don't know. I've had nothing. I had, I take that back. I had one young man come in and ask me about the seat, because it's, you know, I said like middle, but it's across main, and he's on this side. And he's young. He's like probably twenty-eight to thirty-ish. Nice guy. He said, well, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious. I just didn't know how that worked. And I said, I would write his name down and, you know...
Is he breathing?
He's breathing. He's...
Alive, he's alive!
He's alive, yeah. So, that's the only, but he's not in the district. He is not in Ward Two.
Well, my suggestion is, after hearing what you said, is we make, uh... At-large.
I agree.
I think that's the only way we're going to fill seats these days.
And we still have five, which are all at-large. There's no wards. That's what he meant, there's no wards?
That's what he meant. And I, I'm 100% behind that plan, because it has been difficult in years past to fill those seats.
You know, I thought at one point we were going to try to get our elections at the same time as the...
We are, and we have to do that in 2022.
Twenty-two, okay.
But I think, Scott said, we still have to have one more town election. In 2023. So, he and I can cross that bridge. It's something about the timeframe at which you have to try to get on this, but, yeah. Because you would have to, here's, here's what it is, I just, as I said this, is it will shorten the term to three years for council members on the clerk treasurer by jumping on that. So, you have to give, you have to give the people that are running for that, they have to know that in advance.
I remember him saying that.
Yeah, they have to know that in advance. So, we would have to make that change, but still have one more election. You know what I mean?
Well, let's have him prepare ordinance to make at-large.
Okay, do you guys want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that would do all at-large.
I'll second that.
To move to second to make all council seats at-large by ordinance. Is that good?
I think that's fine. Then we'll create the ordinance next year.
Only question? Are you both... All favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. It's a good thing I did come. You wouldn't have had even a quarrel. Okay, okay, that took care of that. One of the things on the pass was joint, have they come forward yet?
I received an email of their insurance certificate, listing some additional insurance. It's all in order, but I have to hear back when they want to come. But I did receive their insurance.
Well... It's spring.
I understand that.
Yeah, wait till spring, move forward on it.
I know, and that's what he said on the phone. We were just waiting for springtime, so...
Okay. Tony, do you know if, uh, you got the pump?
He's picking it up tomorrow, we're installing Thursday.
Okay. You have to take that fence down, right?
I've already got everything loose. All we gotta do is spin the nuts off the end of it and slide it back.
Okay. There's the installation. All right, cool. We did get the, uh... Employment agreement.
We did.
With Tom Marshall.
Yes, we did, signed it.
And he's returned it, signed, and agreeable.
Now, I have a question. In order to make this uniform across the board, are we going to do one for Kevin?
It probably would be wise. But we hadn't, you know, what the, what the concern was.
I know.
But maybe, maybe our attorney could come up with one for Kevin also.
I would think it would be the same thing.
Yeah. Going forward, that would probably be good.
To protect...
Is there any yes?
Him as well as us.
You ready to sign?
Yep, I'm all good.
Has there been any movement on the rock for the drive over here? No?
Well, I have conflict, confictions.
Confictions, well...
That's not a word.
I just made it up. He said to put ties down, the length of it. Carol doesn't like ties.
How are we gonna keep the rock from going over the other people?
Well, I have an idea. I know, I don't really, a rock between the building and the thing is fine, but I think we just need to add more concrete and make it wider. Now, we will have to put some rock down anyway, but... I don't think it would cost that much more. I mean, the driveway and the sidewalks and all that was just twelve hundred. So, the only thing is, is, you know, we won't have a whole... Truck full to use, so I'll have to get like maybe...
Depends on how wide you make it, are you gonna have a truck full or not?
Well, that's, we need somebody to figure out how much it's gonna cost, so... Just maybe three feet wider.
It probably needs to be more than three feet.
You do? I don't...
Huh?
It is a word.
So, did you look it up on Google or...
Well, I'm reading it right now.
What?
Confictions.
Confictions is a word.
Okay, well, let's look into that. That's funny.
Well, I don't want to get in, just at the corner of the building, have it go to the corner.
Straight out from the corner of the building, yeah.
That might be for me, then.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay. So, we have Jamie? Who got us the estimate before, was it Jamie?
I believe it was Jamie.
Okay.
Any movement on that ditch on Vine Street?
No.
No. Okay. Any estimate on the dump truck? Pre-plug? No estimate?
I have, uh, something up the left door.
To where?
NKP. And the other one.
That guy by the...
Affordable Auto?
Yes.
Is that the, by your shop?
No, that's terrific planning.
Does he do that stuff?
I don't know. Affordable Auto's kind of on the other side of 41. It's kind of over by that Verizon building, or not Verizon, Vectren building. It's kind of weird, but they do a lot of good work. They might be willing to take it on a cart like that.
It was a muffler shop forever.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I know it is, all right. Okay. Any other old business? Any way to have old business?
Uh, I think this is probably kind of old business. Um, Gary dropped this off. This is a flash drive of the well pleading. Anyone would like to watch it on their PC.
Oh, yeah?
He said it's just, you know, really exciting and everything.
Does it have audio or is it just video?
I don't know.
Is it to music?
But he said, he dropped it off, and he was like, no, if you start watching it, you just watch a little while longer. So, if any of you are interested in this, I'm going to put this in the safe with all the detailed reports that go with it. So...
You never know, we might need it someday.
You never know, Becky, that's absolutely right.
Might need proof that it was done.
And the amount of money we spent on it?
Yes.
Yes. So...
Yes. They have to look at big screen TV.
Dang, if I was on it, I should have.
All the concerned citizens, it's there.
Put it on the town page.
Oh, yes, see how many views I get?
Yeah, right, sure. Any other old business? I'm gonna do that under reports. Under new business, I have a letter here from a concerned citizen. This concerned citizen even signed their name. This subject is 48 North Baldridge Street. This property next door to me has been empty approximately eight to 10 years. I think it's longer than that. Since the summer of 2014, my son David has mowed the yard and kept it presentable. He was paid $25 per mowing by Wingate Properties of Connersville, Indiana. Who owns it? As of last year, he was not paid, and they said they were selling it. He still kept mowing it because I didn't want to grow up next to my property. This year, he'll be unable to mow it due to his house. I'm very concerned about it growing up in weeds and also condition of the house. The brick chimney has fallen and rolling down the roof. The air conditioner was stolen out of the side opening and is now open to the weather. The inside of the house is unlivable. My concern is, what is going to happen? And is there any way you can condemn the property and have it torn down? Thank you for taking this matter into consideration. If there is anything I can do, I will. You're concerned local citizen Shirley Brown. Well, that house has been empty for one long time. And I'm not sure it was in very good condition when the last people that lived there, lived there. I don't know, we don't have any building inspector, we don't have anything like that. The only thing we could do would be have the health department come and look at it, I think.
Okay, with our new ordinance, with our property ordinance, there is some provisions in there concerning empty houses that are considered dangerous. There's an unsafe building, because that's an unsafe building. So, that ordinance covers a little bit more. Um, I talked to Suzanne when she dropped off Shirley's bill the other day, and she dropped the phone number in for the owner. I placed a call today to talk to them, to see, and someone's supposed to call me back, to see what their plans are, to tell them we're gonna move forward on our ordinance, and I can even send a copy of that ordinance to them. But, but yeah, the chimney has fallen, and I would expect the roof to start caving in at some point, for real reason.
Yeah, there's been, nothing done to that house for, I'd say it's closer to 20 years. I think she's off a few years.
It's a shame.
Does that ordinance specify different violations for that?
I'm pretty sure it does, because when we talked about this, Scott and I talked about the unsafe building, there's a state statute that's unsafe building too.
Right.
And so, a lot of that bill went straight into that ordinance. I just haven't pulled the ordinance, so I will, but...
We highlighted that, sent them to a registered mail, make sure they get it.
Yeah.
That'll start the...
That'll start the process, right. That was my next thing. I wanted to talk to them first and see what they were doing. She was under the impression they were selling it, but I, and I didn't check the property taxes, I don't yet see. They bought it at tax sale.
That's another question, when are the property taxes being paid?
They bought it at tax sale, and according to them, if I remember correctly, the property tax sale had a mistake, and they thought they were buying the property across the street.
Right.
Yeah, and they ended up with that one that they didn't want, because, yeah. So, it does need to come down. So, I, like I said, I placed a call today to the owner, and we'll see what happens. We can send that ordinance.
Well, then, there is movement on this, and we can let Shirley know that.
Oh, let Shirley know, since she dropped that number in, yeah.
Okay. You got new business?
Um, I do. I have new business. Oh, I have new business. Carol and I discussed cleanup day. That's new business. We should have probably talked about it last month, and we started having people ask us. So, we're thinking Saturday, May the 8th. I confirmed that the city center is available, and I had her pencil us in.
Okay.
Lonzo and Marshall are doing, Nate and Russ are doing.
That fits right in there, that place.
Yeah, so then I'll call and get some dumpsters, if everybody's good with that.
Sounds good to me. I have a request under new business. The Florida Beach Buns would like to use this room for their forage meetings. And we'll know if it'd be permissible.
Heck, yeah.
I know somebody's got a key to let me in.
Heck, yeah, use it. That'll actually make me come here and clean it up, and turn it off.
Just bring a loaf of bread and a peanut butter.
I think we need a motion on that to allow that, though.
I make a motion that we allow the Florida Beach Buns to have their forage meetings here due to COVID constrictions for space.
And I'll second that motion. I think that's what we've been trying to do, is make this more available, too.
We have, we have.
Now that we got heating and air conditioning and ventilation.
New windows. Now, I told Karen Russ, the new trustee, that as she settles in and she wants to start meeting with people again, face-to-face, they haven't really done that for the last year on the trustee end, that she's welcome to come down here. I'll be happy to clean that office space out for her in the front.
There?
Yeah, and use that. She's completely welcome for that. So, she and I had a conversation about that last month, so...
A good use of the area. Okay.
Well, I didn't...
My wife will tell you thank you for that.
Didn't we have air purification with our new heating?
We knew we had I-way. Yeah. Supposed to kill viruses. I feel healthier already.
Can move second to allow Florida Beach Buns Forage Club to use the meeting room due to their COVID-19 concerns. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. You gonna bring up the Skeeter stuff now?
We have fourteen gallons of mosquito insecticide. And normally we use more than that, therefore, I contacted our rep, and he says that they'll still give to us a 7.5% off for our current thing, which would be 23.7623 if we order by Friday. We usually use about 45, at least 45 gallons. We usually use about forty-five, at least forty-five gallons.
Didn't you have to order some before summer was over?
We did, and that's all we have is what we did order.
Okay.
That's all we've got over there is thirty gallons. I'm gonna order thirty gallons of room. That way we have it. And it's, normally it's twenty-five sixty-eight. Forty-five, a few more if I want.
I'm making a motion that we buy mosquito spray for Friday.
I'll second it.
Then moved the second to purchase mosquito, thirty gallons of mosquito control chemical for the price of twenty-three seventy-six twenty-three plus shipping. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, any other new business? You'll bring this up? Have a notice here from the from AIM. They're having a virtual clerk treasurer school and twenty-twenty-one Virg- uh, Virg- budget E workshop. Natalie, as in case she wants to do the AIM clerk treasurer school, you wanna do the budget thing too?
Oh, yeah. I've signed enough webinars.
For three days?
Yeah, I just did a four-day one a couple of weeks ago.
The clerk treasurer must not be very important. It's only one day.
Yeah, it's one day.
Budget is four, three days. So I need a motion to approve Natalie attending these two virtual workshops.
I make a motion that we approve Natalie attending the two virtual workshops.
And I will second that motion.
I think this will probably provide some insight onto the American Rescue Plan money that's gonna be much needed.
Right.
Then moved the second to approve clerk treasurer to attend the clerk treasurer's school and budget E workshops. Uh, clerk treasurer's is virtually too.
So much.
Just lock the door and pull down the shade.
Yeah. Hey Natalie, hey Natalie. Oh my God, I'm hanging on. No, I'm just gonna go home.
That may be bested too.
That's what I did for one of the days of the other one.
Attending school, put note on the door, attending school.
Attending training.
Did I ask for a vote on that yet?
Yes, you did.
I did?
Yeah. No, no.
I, I know why.
Aye, aye, aye. Motion carried.
I mean, we, we made the motion and we seconded it.
I know that, I didn't know where we voted on that. All right, you got any new business?
Um, we can talk about the American Rescue Plan for a minute.
Sure, so do you.
Um, so the American Rescue Plan provides considerable amount of money to state municipal government. Um, how that money is to be spent is still a little vague. We will have to adopt an ordinance. We will actually need to do that next month. I'll have Scott, I'm sure he's already got one in the works. Um, our amount that we're entitled to is already set. We're entitled to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the way they're gonna do this is they're gonna give you the first half in twenty-one and the second half in twenty-two. They're asking for, the state board of accounts has issued, they've issued one directive so far, asking us to create a separate fund for towns to do an ordinance. As a part of your ordinance, it says, the ordinance must specify the use of the funds in accordance with the purposes outlined in section six oh three C. Okay, well, let me tell you, the section six oh three C is a little vague. And so we're gonna need some direction. Um, this is, it says, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue. So if we feel like we had a reduction in revenue, um, to make necessary investments in water through a broadband, um, to respond to a public health emergency, it's, it's kind of vague, similar to the stuff we dealt with with the CARES Act money. So, um, AIM, Aiding and Handing Municipalities is really trying to to narrow that down for us and really help us get more guidance. So everyone's welcome to read through this and think about things that they might wanna do. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us is a windfall. I mean, our entire general fund budget is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, you know, I'd like to see it be a worthy, worthwhile project. As far as revenue loss for our community, I don't, our MVH we've lost a little bit then. But beyond that, I mean, our property taxes pretty much remain the same and.
Well, did you say that the money for the, or is that MVH that you're talking about? The money for the police department and the fire department was?
No, that money's, it's static. It's stayed the same. It's been overspent in that money.
Okay.
We had it not a good appropriation, but that's a home rule fund, so, um, that's not a big deal. But, um, so I guess start thinking about it, start talking about it. I'll start talking to Scott a little bit more and look, clerk treasurers are popping up a lot of emails about this and everybody has more questions and very few answers are out there yet. So.
Do you have to claim revenue loss before you have access to that?
Well, it's a good question and one I do not have the answer to. It's talking about a lot of detailed accounting and that.
Start looking for your hundred and fifty thousand now.
Right, it's just like, and yes, they do want you to calculate where you had a revenue reduction and things like that. So it can account for some of that. I just, I don't know how much of a revenue reduction we have really had. But there's other ways to use it as well. So cannot use it to make it up to any pension fund. That's one thing they did outline on here. So it's all vague, but we do wanna get to the bottom of it because we do want our money. So.
Well, I know we had postponed raises for the, because of that. So we still don't really know whether we can.
I don't know. There's some, there's some discussion in here about premium pay. Kind of confusing. I don't really know what that means. I don't feel like that's permanent. So I'd like to go through this a little bit better. And then maybe I can give you guys, shoot you guys an email and see what Scott says and see what some of the other clerk treasurers that I'm communicating with are kind of thinking. So.
You'll have more information later.
Yes, eventually.
Okay. Moving on to report some departments. Uh, water had ninety-five gallons generated. No tags hung.
Nothing, any tags. We did not shut.
No shut offs.
I have three people on my current naughty list and that is all. Really happy about that. Yeah. So also actually, let me say this about water, because we collected a couple really big old debts this last month. And we stored some water to some houses that haven't had water for a little time. So I'm happy about that.
That's good news. Under water, we have the phosphate installation is complete at the, at the pump house.
That was actually on the bills as well. It came in at seventeen hundred and fifty-five dollars.
And did that include chemical for a while?
That I'm not sure. I know there was, there was one five gallon container that we've been running on and there's another saved.
Well, next time you see him, find out how long that's gonna last.
Well, that one's empty. I just saw that today.
Well, he told me, we were having a discussion about this the other day and he said that I, I think that they'll run what they have now and then they'll run something different. Like another, like a different concentration, slightly different concentration after they've had this in for a little while. I understand this kind of correctly, that something called Oracle would go in later. So, but this was the starter of it. I don't know. Gary was talking about a lot of that stuff.
Well, let's hope.
Amen.
It clears up stuff.
I just had a plumber for two days. Clear out all my lungs.
Did you, did you find somebody here?
Huh?
So I can see it advertised at Collins Mobile Home.
Oh, I called them about since that. I will not call them again. I'm talking to them about new hot water heaters and such. And he tells me my phone's ringing. I gotta go to work.
I know, you're telling me that and I thought.
What kind of line is that, Pepper?
PBC galvanized fittings and there's a conglomeration.
Yeah, I know that one put in very freshly up there.
You remember the first one we did back there in the corner?
Yeah.
That split and that wasn't a, of the drain line fitting that they put in there.
Yeah.
It was for no pressure.
Right. That was a gravity type fitting.
Yeah.
Wasn't under pressure.
So I don't know what we're gonna, what this is gonna use to. It may have to cut the main for the whole.
We had a big leak down by the old, old pump house where the water tower used to be. That's when we had the boil order.
I have not seen that bill yet.
And that will be from, uh. U-Mac, U-Mac, yeah.
They will slow it down.
So that one will probably be a pretty good chunk. But that was on main, main line.
That's something during I can, uh, once we got it opened up on like two, I am so glad we didn't try and tackle that.
Yeah. Yeah. But they gotta fix it fairly quick.
Patched.
Well, okay, patched.
May, maybe we need a, um, I don't know, a call chain or something when we have something like that happen to get the word out a little bit better than nasty remarks on Facebook.
I don't feel like people were super nasty on Facebook. I mean, there's nothing you can do about it, at least at least, you know what I mean?
I know.
As far as the boil order went, I, when I, when I lost pressure and I didn't have any water, I called Tony and then I said, we'll have to go on a boil order and Tony's like, well, we called Gary. So we went back and forth and, um, I had it on the news. I did send it in to them.
Okay, I missed it on the news.
Yeah, I did send it in. Um, I called it in and the thing about it is Gary said that the state doesn't, it's super kind of vague. They say that the water operator can determine if you really need one or not, but then they say they really can't determine. So, but everything cuts and fine the next day. So we were, but you know, you just kind of let it expire at that point in time. So there were some, we did fight some pretty yucky water up the hill.
That one, they ran thirty-two hours in the garden before it cleared out.
Yeah.
That was after they'd already, that's after I went up there. And they'd run it for four or five days before it popped and off.
Yeah.
I actually pulled the meter off, turned, turned the turn signal on and run it still. Makes it run thirty-two hours.
There's pretty good slugs went through there. Okay. Uh, you already talked about the sewer when we installed the lift station pump Thursday.
That's what we took this, this afternoon and I talked to them.
Are there any other issues that you know of?
I think they're supposed to be coming out there or whoever it is. They're supposed to be coming out anytime they have to show up. He doesn't know when they're coming, other than they are coming.
Well, at least they give them warning.
Is that just, that's just routine though?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do that so often. Okay, street department?
I don't know, Park Street's going again. And I know the weather has to be.
I don't know what to do on that street.
Our next paving project will have to be, that'll have to be one of them.
Yeah, Natalie's got a whole nursery I saw.
There's a lot of traffic on my street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew that was a dead end.
I understand that. There's still a lot of traffic on my street.
There's a lot of traffic on my street.
There's a lot of traffic on my street, which is fine. I, we're not complaining, but, um, since we're not, can I ask a question on streets? Since we're not doing a big project this year, do we think we could spend a little money on some rock for some alleys? I mean, I know we've been using the millings, but we meant to maybe use that as a base and then add some nice white rock over top. Is that something we? A couple people have asked me about alleys and I know we've, we've worked on them and we've put down millings and I don't know, since like I said, since we're not really, we're not a lot of MVH, we have some MVH restricted money. But I don't know, just food for thought.
The problem with the millings is it needs to be compacted somehow.
We could always rent a roller for a couple of days.
I think that would probably be, be good to do that. And then you'll see if you need more.
Right.
Once it warm to.
Yeah, for settling in.
Nice warm temperature working all. Cause I'll tell you, those piles, you have to break it up the escher if you can get a tractor otherwise. And you can in the skid steer because it's got enough. That tractor won't do it.
Won't skip it well. Okay, let's look at that. Park?
Well, Park has this new sign up.
I haven't seen it. I guess I've been down that road, but not noticed.
I think it just. Put it up today.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I haven't seen it. I haven't been on that road today. Well, I take it back. I was on it this morning about ten o'clock. And it looks like. Well, that looks nice, yes.
You know, and speaking of signs, we do need a new sign out here.
My sign out here is falling down.
Yeah, I saw it. The town hall sign?
Yeah.
And I think we should really have one that says clerk treasurer's office, don't you?
We need one out here.
Yeah.
We do need to consider some signs.
Because nobody knows, they, they drop packages over here, they drop packages out here.
Again, I don't think Hannah wants to make another sign right now.
No, no.
That poor girl.
Yeah, she's a, she's looking for a sign helper. I thought she was saying she was looking for another job. She's trying to find somebody to help her because she was over.
Well, let's get, get surprises or something.
All right.
Do, yeah, we need a sign out there, fairly large with an arrow.
Yes.
Right, for the clerk treasurer.
Two-sided, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, anything else on Park? They looked good after it got cut.
Did you take out any of that, uh, concrete you were talking about?
No, not yet.
In the corner?
No, was the, some of the old chicken and all the other stuff, just on the spring.
Oh, yeah.
A whole little concrete pad was still there. One of them showed that spring base is still anchored. And the newer quarters are good.
That sounds kind of dangerous.
There's been people take bottles over there and bust them on the concrete. It's when I, when I go down through their nose, I just stop and they go through the glass.
That's nice.
I've had that a couple times.
Okay. Fire department?
They had a total of eight runs, seven were medical and they had a gas leak. And Kevin, what's the, what's the word on what you're doing now?
As of right now, Mother's Day will be a sit-down breakfast, as of right now. Planned by years would go long. Easter breakfast turned out pretty good, I think we served about three eighty, thirty-five or something like that. People are definitely ready to come and sell.
Okay. What day is it?
We made the ninth on it.
The ninth of Mother's Day?
After we get everything cleaned up.
That's right, it looks so nice for Mother's Day.
Yeah.
Haven't heard anything about alumni, have you, John?
No, I haven't.
But I don't know if school would let them...
Fundraisers.
That might be a problem, yeah.
At last I talked to them that the schools are not letting any outside groups have any activities on school grounds.
Uh, how many times has the cemetery been cut?
Just one.
Two times?
Two times?
Three today.
I was gonna say it was cut today.
Third time today. It sure looked different out there when I went out there to put flowers on after it had been cleaned up.
I know.
It looked barren out there.
It's, it's looking better now, there's a lot of flowers out there.
There's a lot of traffic out there.
Is there? Okay, police department, oh, I got it right there. Oh.
No.
Okay, I guess I asked about the cemetery.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, there.
Cremation, uh, cremation, zero, burial, one, plot sold, zero. Veteran's graves, there was three plots.
Yeah, I signed three plots or that.
And veteran stone setting, one paid for.
Sligers been dropped off here, I mean, did you take it today?
No, I opened it, checked my show.
Yeah. It has that with the set, there's a slider.
Do you have the base already?
No, I only request to pick up the base.
Okay.
On the cemetery, we went and bought a, up to the putty, are we setting stones? And we was out there cleaning that stuff, Beth and I went ahead and we did six a couple of days. We said, now, there's actually a couple of them that was leaning the whole base and everything. Pulled them up and repacked underneath them. And there's some of them out there that are literally that deep and they're around, they're just tall.
Yeah.
First we, we ran, we just said it's about, but we started working on the back.
Well, they settled, they, no doubt.
Me, Ashman, Evelyn Ashman, who she was in a couple of weeks ago and she and Jim Roscoe would like to meet with. I said, probably maybe you and Carol, a couple council members, about maybe a cemetery expansion. Um, she had a little bit of an accident, so she's kind of down and out right now. She was hoping to try to get that done like last week or this week, but she's...
There beside her house?
Had an accident at her house?
No.
Oh.
Property you're talking about.
I think so, yeah, I think so.
Between her and...
I believe so.
Preachers.
So, she said that, she said that Jim's ready to start that discussion. She would like, before she advised herself, thought she'd like to see what's gonna happen and so... So, anyway, that's the discussion, um...
Yeah, I was, I was kind of looking at that and I don't know whether she, where their property actually. Is it just that pasture that, hey, alfalfa field or whatever, I mean?
I think so.
Well...
And then...
Behind her house is theirs.
Yeah.
And...
Between hers and, between her and JT, JC?
Yeah, that's theirs too.
Or that, I thought on over was...
They go all the way back to the tree line back.
Yeah.
All the way back and around.
There's that narrow, little narrow part of a field there beside the old part of the cemetery, real old part.
Okay.
That's theirs too.
All right.
So, I'll look for her once she starts feeling better to get with us on that.
Okay.
So... I have run into cemetery concern, um...
Oh, what are you gonna talk about?
I'm not talking about this chapter. Um, I, the last burial that we had last week or whenever that was, um, the people that bought the plot said they prepaid the town for opening and closing. Well, I had someone try to pay that one day and I didn't feel comfortable taking it, so I called Karen Jeffries at Dooches and she said, never, never take that money, Natalie. She said, because that actually, you should have a trust for it and you should have a contract with them because the funeral home is who always pays us to open and close the graves. So, whoever bought this grave said they paid opening and closing. And I talked to Jeff Gooch about it and he said that our former cemetery sexton took that money all the time. He said she wasn't probably supposed to, but she did. Now, they, this family did have a receipt issued to them from the town of Rosedale. Um, I have found one receipt book in there. There are a couple mentions of opening and closing in it. The receipt book that this one came from, I have not found. Hope maybe Carol and I can dig through some more stuff and see what we've found, but I am, I am kind of concerned about this in the future. I don't know...
You don't have to be concerned about it, anybody trying to do it, but you're not...
I'm not going to take it. I would not, no, I wouldn't take it before and I'm not gonna take it now, I just don't know. I don't know how many people and I can't, don't have receipt books and not everybody's gonna have their receipt from fifteen or twenty years ago and I, I don't know. I had someone claim that they paid that, but I don't know, I haven't been in the office very long and I was like, well, I don't have any record of that and they just, they, they paid it again. But I don't, now I think back, maybe they really did pay it, I don't, I don't know. This kind of bothered me, but no, I don't care about this.
Well, normally when we prepaid stuff, it's to the...
Right, to the funeral home.
Mortuary.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there are some in that receipt book I did find that did say prepaid. And I, and I was just kind of, kind of cross-referencing to see if those people were already deceased and I wouldn't need to worry about it, but I haven't had a chance to do that, so...
Kevin, when you guys are patrolling, there's been some after-hours traffic in the cemetery. So, you might kind of wanna...
Did you see some more lights over there?
That, they, when you asked me about those lights, I didn't see anything, I didn't...
I don't think she just noticed the light over the...
I wonder if there, there's a light back by the...
There's a motion line out there?
There's a motion line out there, if something goes across the front, everyone pay those along.
There's a light out by the sewer plant that goes off and on.
I know.
I wonder if she saw that, I don't know. But, I called Park County when there was a car out there a few weeks ago. Darker than dark and they wanted to know what color it was. And about that time it...
It's dark color.
Dark color.
About that time it took off rather, rather quickly. It took off and went to the south and then, of course, I don't know where it went from there.
Yeah.
But, uh, just might kind of glance that way.
Yeah, well, I went the next morning after I saw that.
Eight to three and bomb the fifth.
I went to make sure the escalator was still there.
Thirteen, Mandy hasn't given me an update since then.
Oh, that's three.
Well, we had four when I left.
Now, what is it?
Yeah.
Please, both four.
It was eight to three, quarter after seven.
Oh, okay.
But Mandy hasn't updated that since she sent it out.
Well, we'll have to get on that.
She forgot, she forgets things all the time. It probably is on tour.
It probably is.
Okay, we ready for police then?
Yeah.
Traffic stop. Four. Fire brush, what's that mean?
Maybe one of us was supposed to go brush fire.
Oh, okay.
Called it in or something.
Blood, investigation follow-up, four warnings. Was that too fast for you?
So, there were four investigation follow-ups?
No, one follow-up.
Oh, and four warnings?
Four warnings.
Okay. Um, we're able to, Park County's pick up another WRC in Danksaw, which went over county, right in Park area, date three.
All right.
Awesome. Okay, uh, we don't have anything on properties or anything like they do, look?
No, we really haven't talked to them about anything, um...
Is there any progress on the one up there on, uh, Deephole Street? Start tearing down yet or anything?
No.
No, he has not. And, um, I will say that in the initial bid packet, we gave them ninety days to tear it down. And then when Jordan wrote the contract, which I didn't read the whole thing, I'd given him a year to tear it down.
Oh, wonderful.
So, I'm gonna call and have conversation with him. See if we get moving on it, but, that is what happened. I discovered that last week or so.
Okay.
His mom did just pass away, so...
That's true.
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, family problems.
Yeah, so, there's that.
Okay, clerk treasurer's report.
Um, things are going good, just been really busy in here. Um, I don't really have anything to say.
Okay. Public comments, anybody? Big crowd, Tony?
I have a request. Can you put me on the Facebook pages and admin or something for, I don't have to wait three hours or whatever for something to get posted?
Kevin said no.
Other than mine, I'll put that out there right now.
Yeah.
It's just when something happens, I don't know when I, and I put it on and it doesn't get to show up until seven, eight o'clock in the morning. Some people need to know when they're getting out of bed.
We'll get back to you on that. Any other public comments? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I'm making motion, we pay the bills.
I will second that.
Got a lot of CMEs and BDs today.
Yeah.
Been moved, seconded, approved the bills as presented. Anything on their question? Here they are.
We looked at them all, though.
I know, but you gotta sign it.
Oh, we gotta sign them, oh, yeah. I've slept since last month.
All favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carried. Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. I'm making motion to adjourn.
Been moved, seconded, adjourned till next meeting? All favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks for coming.